I'll now call this meeting with Jacksonville City Council's order. I want to welcome everyone who's in attendance tonight for the meeting, also those that'll be watching it on G10 television. I'm going to ask Jeremiah Philogene if he would come forward, please. Jeremiah is with Troop 743 of Boy Scouts of America and based out of Hubert, and he is working on leadership in the community badge. Jeremiah is going to, we're all going to stand, and he's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as always, we pause to give you thanks, to give you thanks for this day and for all the blessings that you so graciously bestow upon us individually and corporately as the city of Jacksonville. Remind us, dear Lord, that you gift us, you gift us with a life, and that our gift back to you is how we live that life. We pray that each of us would commit ourselves to giving that back to you by serving you and serving others. We pray for our military who are serving us this evening, many of them in harm's way. We pray for their families and for their safety, and we pray always for our mayor and for our council, that your guidance and direction would be with them. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Council, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting, but I will remove two of the consent agenda items, or I'm sorry, add two of them. Backwards. One is for Riverwalk Marina Summer Rental Program, which you should have already received a copy, and also Planning Advisory Board Appointment, which you should have a copy of that. Also, end your motion to adopt, to remove the closed session for tonight's meeting.
Do you approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion here, not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, we've come to our first section of public comment for the evening. I have one person that has signed up to speak, and that would be Mr. Oliver Ford. Mr. Ford, if you'd state your name and address for the court.
My name is Oliver Ford, 311 Brentwood Avenue, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 2540. I'm here for the same reason I was here at the last meeting, police brutality. I was falsely arrested, and I wanted off my record. You guys don't seem to care about that, but I'm still spinning my wheels as I go. As I see it, we've told our, we've been told, I've been told all my life, you don't fight the police in public, you wait and take it to court. But the thing they don't tell you is, the court system is just as crooked as the cops out there. I mean, we have them, everybody knows we have them, but nobody cares. So, as I'm looking at the system that's set up for us, that's set up for people of color or anybody in general, I'm noticing there's a pattern. We have the police on the street, and we have the police that brutalize individual, me myself for one, that's what they did. We have the police chief, who's in charge of the police officers. Then we have internal affairs that we could complain to, but what they don't tell you is, internal affairs answers to the police chief. So, in other words, we're airing our grievances to the same people that's providing the grievances, right? It's not going anywhere. Then you have the police chief, and you have the city manager. The police chief answers to the city manager. Air your grievance to the city manager, it means nothing. The city manager answers to the council. Air your grievances to the council, it means nothing. You're just spinning your wheel with the same system that's been set up for our along. It's a, it's a nice system. I mean, if I was part of this system, I guess I would want it to work that way, where it really doesn't matter what the citizens think or whatever. Did any of, anybody look into the problem that I have? Because y'all don't care. Thank you very much for your time.
We also, I had only one person sign up. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak? We'll move right on to the adoption of the minutes and consent items. We have the minutes from a June 8, 2021 regular workshop meeting. Minutes and the consent items as amended. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us to agenda item, or number 13, legislative hearing, public hearing for a map amendment, rezoning of parcels along Preston Road, North Marine Boulevard, Sophia Drive, Richlands Avenue, and Beecham Lane. Jeremy Smith will be presenting this item. Jeremy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Agenda item 13 is, is just that, public hearing for a rezoning. This is a city of Jacksonville-initiated rezoning of a somewhat large area spanning from Richlands Avenue, Preston Road, Sophia Drive, and Marine Boulevard. Note the area, the overall area before you on the screen, aerial photography. This is the area around Richlands Avenue, Beecham Lane, and Preston Road. The properties highlighted, bolded in black are the properties in question. It's what we call the central area, the Preston Road rezoning. This is the northeastern area, starting from Onslow Drive, the McDonald's, all the way up to the new city of Jacksonville multimodal center. And this is the area from the new Circle K down to the city-owned property where the Sewer Lift Station and Quartz Plus are. To give you a little history of this, city staff has been looking at this area since around 2019, when we had a conforming use issue around Beecham Lane, specifically properties that were being used for residential but were zoned commercial. And earlier this year, we received a rezoning request for 213 Preston Road, and it is in the same situation, is where you have a single-family home is the use, but the zoning is currently neighborhood commercial. When the UDO was adopted in 2014, it changed the neighborhood, what was then neighborhood business, now neighborhood commercial zoning, to only allow commercial uses. The use of single-family was no longer allowed. So what happens when you have that conforming issue, if someone goes to sell or financing and the property is zoned commercial, the bank is asking the city to provide verification, could the use be rebuilt in its current state? And our answer is no, because the use isn't allowed. So, since staff had already been looking at these areas for a potential rezoning, as if you recall, several years ago, we brought a large area at Lejeune and Western, where we changed property from industrial to CC because of similar issues, where you had conforming issues. So we brought this to you tonight because of several properties, and it's primarily this area, the central area. The Richlands Avenue area, this is where we have some apartments that are currently split zone, residential multifamily, low density, and residential single-family. Neither one allow apartments. So if those buildings were to burn down, be destroyed beyond 50% of their value, they couldn't be rebuilt. These properties right here are currently used for single-family residential. However, they're zoned neighborhood commercial, as are the properties along Preston Road. They're zoned neighborhood commercial, however, they're currently used for single-family residential. We are proposing, as you'll see in a few slides, to rezone them to zoning districts that would allow either for the apartments residential multifamily high-density, and that would also include the properties on Beecham. Residential multifamily high-density allows single-family uses. Those residentially-used properties on Preston Road, we will be proposing residential multifamily Moving on to the northeastern area, this also includes a situation where we have homes on Sophia Drive that are currently non-conforming because of the property, the current zoning is neighborhood commercial. We have some neighborhood commercial here, but they are used commercially, either individually or by the adjacent properties that are on Marine Boulevard. The properties across Marine Boulevard are the residual tracks of the city's acquisition of the old railroad corridor. They are zoned corridor commercial. We will be proposing to take them to industrial to keep them uniform with the other properties behind them, most notably some warehouse uses, propane and gas sales. This is the property to the southwest. Again, this starts at the corner with the new Circle K at Onslow Drive, and moves all the way down to the Quartz Plus and the city-owned property. These are in an inverse situation where they're all zoned industrial, and there are a few non-conforming issues, specifically the Bailey Shops. Originally, the industrial zone prior to the UDO allowed shopping centers, strip centers. However, with its adoption, that went away, the adoption of the UDO. So we're proposing to take this area all the way up to the Chevron Station and McDonald's, and we'll be proposing to take it to corridor commercial. For the most part, the Camma land use plan will be supporting most of our proposals. You'll note in our, as I'll read it out, but the staff and planning advisory board are recommending approval of tonight's rezoning with the condition that we come back to this board amending the Camma land use plan, so it continues to support the zoning that we are hoping to change to. This is the Camma as it exists in the northeastern area. The green is Park. Again, that coincides with the city's acquisition of the old railroad corridor, and for the most part, uses it for the multi-use trail. This is the southwest area. Again, neighborhood commercial, regional commercial are all supported by the current uses and the proposed zoning tonight. This is the central area, back to that, noting, and it doesn't highlight this, and I do apologize, but this is the Richlands Apartments over in this area. We are proposing to take all of that to neighborhood or residential multifamily high-density. I apologize, it's not shown on the map, but we are proposing to take it to residential multifamily high-density, as well as these tracks. Again, this is an old map. I apologize. We are proposing to take both of these to residential multifamily high-density. That would allow the single-family on those two tracks on Beecham and the apartments at the end of Richlands. These properties along Preston Road all currently have single-family residential uses on them. We're proposing to take them to residential multifamily low-density. That allows the single-families to continue, and that way, if there's any chances for selling or refinancing, they should not have issue with funding or selling the properties. In the Richlands Avenue, there's five parcels that will, this will be correcting a conforming issue. On the Beecham Lane, two parcels. This proposed rezoning would correct two conforming issues. And along the Preston Road area, this would correct 21 instances where a single, a residential use exist, isn't conforming, and we will be bringing that forward, or we'll making it consistent with this rezoning. These five parcels right here are currently vacant and have various uses. They're either vacant, or they're used for the, commercially, as are the adjacent properties. So we propose to keep them commercial, in this case, taking them to the next step of corridor commercial. This is the home of the Board of Realtors, currently zoned neighborhood commercial. We're proposing to take it to office and institutional. This is the northeastern area, again, along Sophia Drive. We have seven properties right here that are currently used for single-family, currently zoned neighborhood commercial. With this rezoning, we're proposing to rezone them to residential multifamily low-density. These four parcels, again, I, there's an error on the map, I apologize. These four parcels are proposed to go to corridor commercial. They are used commercial currently, and this would make them continue their conforming status. It just takes them to the next level of commercial, no longer neighborhood commercial, but corridor commercial. These are the properties spanning from the O'Reilly's, along the front of O'Reilly's, down to the city's multimodal center, proposing to take it to industrial, not creating any new non-conformities, keeping it consistent with the area. This is the southwestern, southwestern area. Again, this will correct, I believe it's three non-conforming situations. That's with the, the Bailey Shops and the advanced, or the Enterprise Auto Rental. They will now be conforming under the CC if this is approved. The other uses will all continue to conform with the CC zoning. The city-owned property is split zone industrial residential right now, and we're proposing to bring it forward as corridor commercial. So this is the overall proposed rezoning, and it is accurate. I can see that on the map. Again, it has the proposed residential multifamily high-density in the Richlands Beecham Lane area, has the residential multifamily low-density along most of Preston Road, the Board of Realtors property, the properties along Sophia Drive, the four parcels on both Zack Circle and Cox Avenue, and then those properties along Marine Boulevard. Overall, 35 residential uses will be brought into conforming status if this rezoning is proposed, is approved. The Planning Advisory Board has reviewed properties in this area twice. Once at their May, May meeting, they reviewed the bulk of the area. At their June meeting, we reviewed the Richlands Apartments areas and revisited the Beecham Lane parcels and changed the proposed zoning to coincide with the apartments of residential multifamily high-density. The Planning Advisory Board, along with staff, is recommending that the city council approve this rezoning, with findings of fact, findings of fact, A through J, being found affirmative if staff is directed to amend the Camma land use plan, and that the rezoning advances the public interest by correcting conforming land uses and creating more development opportunities. I'll notice a lot to take in, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Let me ask Jeremy, if he would address this. I know that we've had the opportunity to have very nice, informative meetings with several property owners. The rezoning of property, he has explained to you. There are many people in the audience tonight who are concerned their property is not being rezoned, but their property is next door to property that's being rezoned. For example, you may have property, let's say, on Henderson or on 17. That property's not being rezoned, but the property behind them is being rezoned. So I think it's important for the mayor and council, as you begin this discussion and listen to the audience and any comments they want to make, that Jeremy also explains to you what indirect, what I'm going to call an indirect impact. The direct impact is changing zoning. But when you change zoning, there is also the potential for indirect impact on property that's not being rezoned. So Jeremy, would you address that, please?
So in several cases, you currently have neighborhood commercial or some type of commercial next door to commercial zoning. Impacts of changing an adjacent property to residential when it buts commercial is that if the commercial property goes to redevelop, it is now adjacent to a residentially-zoned property. So if they, they may trigger compliance issues in buffers, lighting, or what have you. However, it doesn't impact what's happening there today, it's future impacts if they look to expand or redevelop. Our ordinance is constructed in a manner that we can work with properties as they redeveloped, so they don't bear the brunt of full compliance, that we can work with them, kind of a compromise, as you would say, the ordinance presents hardship cases when, when it comes to redevelopment of property that may have complied years ago, but now due to changes, rezoning, or new standards, we have that ability. Again, it doesn't impact the current operations, it could impact future development. Again, that's, we have standards like parking that may come into compliance, or landscaping, or lighting.
Thank you.
Refresh our memories on what would trigger those types of.
So if, and this goes for obviously any property in the city, any, if a property expands, they have to come into a percentage of compliance based on their building expansion or redevelopment. If there's remodeling, if it, there are certain thresholds that are remodeling based on tax value of the building, and they would have to come up to a percentage of additional parking maybe, or additional landscaping, that includes your street lawns, your perimeter lawns. And in this case, for commercial properties, that would, would possibly be abutting residential, it would be buffers, 30-foot Type A landfill or landscaping buffers. But those thresholds, those instances are expansions, possibly remodeling, redevelopments. Sometimes you may have a knockdown and a rebuild. Those would be the situations where additional new compliance may trigger.
Let me be, I see a couple of interesting looks from council members. If you're in an existing building, and you're commercial, and the property behind you is commercial, you can redevelop, you really don't have to issue, worry about buffers or anything like that. What Jeremy is saying is that when the property behind these properties is zoned now, is zoned commercial, and you're moving to residential, number one, there's no immediate impact on those businesses. They don't have to do a thing. They can continue to operate. But if they decide they're going to redevelop, let's say for discussion purposes, they want to tear down their whole building and they want to start over, they're going to have to meet the full development standards. And to be quite frank with you, that's going to be difficult for some of these properties because they don't have a lot of depth. Normally, you have a 30-foot buffer, I believe we refer to it as a Type A.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Normally, we have a 30-foot buffer between commercial and residential. It's not realistic for any of these commercial properties to meet that 30, that 30-foot buffer. Why? Because in most cases, especially some of the buildings along 17, they're already built right back to the alley. On Henderson, some of those properties are either using that 30-foot area for part of their parking, or they're built almost to that area. What that means is that the city staff, under current rules in the UDO, will then negotiate where they meet the standards as much as possible under redevelopment. But I don't want you to be misled in any way. There are going, while everything that you're being seen tonight is positive for the landowners that are having their, their land rezoned, there are indirect impacts on those that are adjacent to it. And that's really, I think, what you're going to hear from the public tonight. There may be one or two people here who are opposed to the rezoning. Most of the people here tonight are concerned about the indirect impact, that even though their property's not being rezoned, that if something happens to their property and they need to redevelop it, they're going to have to meet standards that they don't meet today under the current zoning. And I think, Jeremy, am I describing this correctly?
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's the real issue, I believe, that you're going to hear from most of the folks tonight. Now, I'm not sure that there is a simple way out of that, because zoning standards are obviously drawn broadly. I think the saving grace is that in the code, there is the very clear language that says that when you have a redevelopment, that the staff is allowed to negotiate so that they meet the standards to their best ability. And in some cases, such as the ones along 17, they actually can't meet any of the standards because they're already all the way to the rear. But I think that's the dilemma that you're going to hear tonight. Can you need to clarify that, or Ryan, you want to clarify it before we go any further?
The only thing, good evening, Mayor Council. The only thing that I would add is that along with the redevelopment, the 2011 clause has also included lots less than one acre, narrow lots, irregularly shaped lots, along with that redevelopment. So it's not just a redevelopment, there's some other provisions in that hardship scenario that staff would be able to utilize to, to work with the development that's occurring. It was probably prior to the UDO and probably prior to that 2011 case, but when Spankies went through the special use permit, they were required to have a buffer, but they didn't have the adequate room because of the alley that runs behind that strip center there on Henderson Drive. And council found a way, after staff worked with them, to approve that special use permit, even though there wasn't the 20-foot Type A buffer. So I think that there's provisions in the ordinance with that 2011 text amendment that John Pierce brought forward, that's still in our code today, that provided that that stays in the code, that we have the ability to work with people that redevelop the properties.
John, do you want to give the council an idea?
Well, I was going to say, my reading on this is between the rock and the hard place. Because if you don't rezone some of these properties, if these properties, these homes get burned down, or they try to sell them, they're not going to be able to. They're not going to be able to rebuild, they're not going to be able to sell, because the mortgage company's not going to loan money on a house that's in a commercial zone.
That's correct.
I mean, that's where you have a real issue here.
So you're saying none of these homes have been sold in this period of time since this change occurred back in 14?
Oh, we don't actually know that.
We don't know that. It could be sold and be cashed, it could be owner-financed, all kinds of situations. But normally, a mortgage company is wanting to check on, you know, to make sure it's property zoned for the residents to be there.
Routinely, we get a request for a zoning verification letter, and that's where the city provides them a letter that states the property, you know, 100 Preston Road is zoned neighborhood commercial, and a dwelling unit is not a permitted use at that location. And that's, that's the information they request, and when that happens, that's where people run into financing problems.
Let me give you one thought, and I know you haven't heard from the public, but I think that, I think that we've, we've stated what the issue is for most. You know, part of the responsibility to staff is to also give you guidance on how do you get out. I believe the attorney used the legal term, you're in a place between the rock and the hard place, is that?
That was the legal term.
Now, that's a legal term you found in, in law school. And where'd you go to law school?
Kewport.
Okay, UNC, okay. When the UDO was adopted, one of the things that happened in 2014 was we took a whole lot of districts, and we boiled them down to just a few districts. And that was good in many ways. That's fine if you're dealing with corridor commercial along Western Boulevard. That's fine with corridor commercial if you're dealing with any area where you have larger lots and you have, you know, that type of development. What becomes difficult, though, is that when you look at the area along Onslow and Henderson and 17, that was already developed on small lots, was that a good idea? One option that you might have is to direct the staff to go back into areas such as these along Henderson and Onslow and 17, and create a new commercial district that doesn't have the same standards for the buffering that we. the same standards for the buffering that we currently apply to any corridor commercial area. I mean, you know, one size doesn't fit all. What we did when we rezoned the properties in 2014 is we, I think, did a lot of good things by eliminating too many districts. I think this is a case where hindsight says, maybe you eliminated, we eliminated too many. Technically, under the code today, we are required as your staff to implement the code. One option you could have tonight is to approve these requests, and direct the staff that they bring back modifications to the zoning code that would eliminate the issue that many of the folks behind us are facing if this rezoning goes through. What I'm saying to you, though, is the only option that I see as a planner, as your manager and a former planner, is this. You either deny the rezoning and keep people in a bad situation, you approve the rezoning and put some people in a bad situation, or you direct the staff to go back and modify the code. Because once again, as you know, as the old saying goes, the law is the law until the law is not the law. So the long and the short of it is, one option available to you is to direct the staff to go back and modify the buffering requirements on situations like we're facing here tonight.
Does that take care of both sides?
I believe it would, it would eventually, you're obviously have to adopt that, but that would take care of both sides, because it would mean that the properties being rezoned are now conforming, not nonconforming, and the properties that are indirectly being impacted would be taken care of, because you will have amended your code relative to the things that this change is going to to result in.
And that's lawfully doable.
As long as you go through the public hearing process and you amend the code. But we, as a staff, can't tell somebody that they don't have to meet a standard if it's in the code. You have to give us the ability to have that flexibility by changing your code.
Yeah, one of my questions was, it was mentioned if the houses burnt down. What if the businesses burnt down, or weather affected the businesses? Would they have to, like, if we changed the code but didn't modify it, would they have to bring it up to a new standard?
That's right.
That's true.
However, we would be able to apply the hardship cases. So, for example, 30-foot Type A buffer is what the law states you have to do. But we also have this hardship case. It may be that we get a 15-foot buffer with an eight-foot fence versus a six-foot fence. We have worked with people that find themselves in dimensional issues with a requirement. The hotel that the gentleman spoke about at a previous meeting on 17, they're going to have a problem between parking and landscaping when they put $5 million in the building. We're going to be faced with that issue, and we're going to work with the developer on, you know, how much landscaping versus how much parking based on $5 million with the renovation cost. So we deal with this all the time. And with that 2011 standard that was put in the code pre-UDO, we now have specific language as it relates to redevelopment, small lots, et cetera. Now, we can, as Dr. Wooder stated, bring forth a text change that will make that a little bit more specific to additional situations, whether it be lack of depth, a new zoning district, whatever it may be, that we can help kind of fortify the UDO to make that even more clear. But we we deal with this all the time.
We're going back to what Mr. Smith said about the burning down or a natural disaster. I mean, can they not just put it back in the same footprint? I understand if they want to redevelop it, but can we not get rid of that, where they could just build back exactly the same footprint they had before, so they didn't have to meet all those buffers, so they wouldn't have to bring on more expense to the business owners if, you know, they're already going through all this as it is, say a hurricane or fire or whatever it may be? Can we not just put it back the way it is?
Right now, the UDO would require compliance, but the code could be amended to not require compliance.
For, let's say, a natural disaster versus, say, just a redevelopment, can you have different verbiage in there for that?
He talks about casualty damage now, so we would have to amend that part of, it's Article 7 nonconformities, we would have to amend that part of the code if that's something that council desires.
I believe the attorney has a recommendation for you. He's the one who put you in the rock and the hard place, so we'll see if he can get you out of there.
I would suggest, Mayor and Council, if you're interested in what the coattorney said here as far as amending the code and the zone, et cetera, to, especially for this corridor along Marine Boulevard, Anzlo Drive, where you have the lack of depth for these lots, and specifically to draft a new way of dealing with those, so folks wouldn't be here at the mercy, but rather those would be put in a specific zoning so that they would know they're protected, that the council consider going ahead and opening up the public hearing, and hearing from the folks who are here that would like to speak, and not close that hearing, but continue it to a date certain, and we can get with Mr. King here as they're speaking, so that by that time, he believes he could get this through to the planning board, draft it, get it through the planning board, and be back. So at the same meeting, you could do both of these things. That is, hopefully approve the zoning that's been requested tonight, and also approve the text so that these folks would have comfort that they're all happening together. And Ryan can help.
And one other spin from that may be that everything on the eastern side of 17 that do not have those issues, maybe you go ahead and approve that rezoning? I don't know if that's possible with with closing the public hearing. I'm not sure, that may kind of throw a wrinkle in it.
Probably do it all at one time.
But yeah, as as Mr. Carter stated.
Couple more questions before we go to the public hearing. How is it the Bailey shops are out of compliance? They were just built a few years ago, it seems like.
Currently, industrial does not allow shopping centers as a permitted use per 4.1 use table.
So they built prior to this? Change?
Believe so, yes.
And so that a lot of these nonconformities were because of our UDO, and they were eliminated as a use. We couldn't amend the UDO to allow the use?
That's that's one option as well, although we're trying to get industrial zones where they belong versus, and that's kind of what we're doing here. We think that the appropriate thing for this bottom area, the southwestern area, is to change that to corridor commercial, because that's the development that's there, not industrial. Industrial zones allow things that may not be desirable land uses along a main corridor in Jacksonville. That is an option, yes. But that's not the recommendation that staff would give you as far as to make the changes to the zoning makes more sense at this location here, and like what we're doing here.
It's been a good topic for a workshop, maybe along the ways these past couple years that you've been working on it, instead of having to digest all of this.
We apologize for that. Be quite frank with you, we have been working on this a while, and it was only this past week when we had the opportunity to meet with several property owners whose properties were not actually being rezoned, that they brought this to our attention.
Well, we also had an applicant. So we had a citizen request to rezon their property on Preston. So when we have a request, sometimes we expand on that. And since we were kind of looking at it, you know, we've got to act on that citizen's request. And that's that's kind of why, that kind of puts it in a little bit more of a faster turnaround for us when an applicant makes it versus when it's just staff working on something. I don't disagree with your thought, but that's why we went ahead and brought it forward.
But it's a lot of all at once, too. I mean, if you brought some of these maybe individually, it'd been easier to to go ahead. But anyway, I guess we need to proceed with the public hearing.
You have something?
The the residential, that person that brought you the request, are they're obviously under some sort of timeline?
Chairman?
Yes, sir. That came up because their attorney, closing attorney called for the zoning verification. And it's my understanding, while they're not here, they're in New Jersey, they have been pushing their closing date as a contingency on this rezoning possibly going forward.
Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
We, you had mentioned something about maybe holding the public hearing open, but it sounds like we might need to go ahead and make a vote tonight in order to help out a residential property. Are you you concurring with that?
From what I was hearing from Mr. Smith, yes, sir. There seems to be some urgency there. I don't know any of the details of that, but they were ready to close and just found this out the last minute.
You know, what what I think we probably need to do, and this maybe is outside the question, question period, but I think we need to approve the rezoning for the residential folks, but I think we need to certainly need to have staff come back and give us some options to to not put the commercial owners in a future bind. I know, I know that this current staff and the current city manager would be more than willing to work with the the commercial owners at some point down the future to accommodate their problems. Not enough depth, not enough parking, not enough landscaping, probably the lighting's not correct. I mean, we could go on and on. Even so much, you mentioned about putting the same footprint, you've got setbacks that they may not be able to meet under the current current that. So so even though the current current city folks are probably able and willing to work, we don't know what the future might do. I don't want to be putting our commercial folks in a jam in the future with a perhaps a less willing to work with them city staff. I mean, we do have one now, but we may not in the future. So I think we need to come back, and my my guess is is probably direct the staff to come back with a recommendation, but I'm thinking that that I'm going to concur with you that, and the manager, that they're going to have to come back with some sort of a special zone for those properties that that are in that bind. We don't need to be putting those folks to help one set of citizens putting the other citizens in a in a in a in a nonconforming use. Essentially, we would be creating a nonconforming use for those commercial properties that back up to that residential area that can't meet the current standards. So we've got to change something to allow them to continue to operate, be successful, be an important part of this community. And at the same time, we need to correct the the zoning for those residential folks that are going to be in a bind. They they need to have the correct zoning in order to refinance, in order to sell their properties, or whatever they have to do. So I think that's where we're where we've got to head on this.
I got additional concern. You know, like we talked about the nat- natural, a natural disaster, or, you know, property burning.
Hurricane Florence, a hurricane Florence would have created a bad situation for us.
And anything, you know, basically, and with any business, if you have to conform at that point, now only are you incurring issues because you've been out of business for a period of time, but then you have to deal with the conforming issue. So we, I think we need to think about that holistically.
Or you have the the public, I know we're getting ready to open the public hearing. Jeremy, would you point again, where is the property that the person is asking for the zoning verification?
It is 213 Preston Road, which is right around in that area.
We also have a beach in the situation.
And then we also have current, currently used single family right there. That was kind of the trigger for us to start looking at this area being used.
As you think about this, let me let me also just give you, under zoning law, once it is advertised, you cannot expand what's being rezoned, but you can reduce what was advertised. So let's let's talk. If you're going to take an action tonight other than postponing, what you could do is to say, these properties, we're going, you know, make a motion, these properties are going to be rezoned according to the staff's recommendation, and the following properties are not going to be rezoned, they're going to be taken out of the motion. So for example, everything on 17, and I'm just going to look at the map this way, everything from 17 back towards, back towards to our right, Jacksonville Station, I'm not hearing anybody here complaining about any of that rezoning. So you could rezon that tonight. You could say across the street there, where you have the furniture store and the bicycle shops and all of that, that that's being taken out of the rezoning tonight. On the other hand, on Anzlo, you could say the same thing. Now, it doesn't obviously solve the problem that for the one piece of property that's circled there. Up on the top, where it says proposed, that land under there could stay in the rezoning tonight. I'm just saying to you, you have a lot of options. Question is, which option do you want?
To answer Mr. Warden's question, that he didn't quite ask, but really is asking, again, if you see that 213 Preston, that is back behind my mechanic, et cetera. So you've got that conflict, even if you say, let's just approve that one tonight, forget spot zoning and all that stuff. I believe, after you hear from the public, if you were to approve the zoning, rezoning as indicated here, with specific directions to staff to come back with a remedy for council's approval, owner before September the 21st, giving time for it to go to planning board, et cetera, that I've just checked with Ryan, that we can be back in front of you and have you text amendment to remedy this situation that you're concerned about. But first, you need to hear from the public.
As far as I'm concerned. So we're going to ahead, reset the regular meeting, and we're going to open up the public hearing in this matter. I know we have people that want to speak, and I'll start, Mr. Terrell had his hand raised a few minutes ago. Do you want to speak first? You need to come to the podium, please.
Thank you.
For the clerk, if you would state your name and address, Mr. Terrell.
I think the widening of the highway brought most of the problems to us. Before we widened the highway, we had lots of room. When they came along and said, well, we're going to make it this and that and do, they took some of our frontage. And that frontage is what we needed to address the problems that y'all are talking about. So my thought is that whenever you have a highway area, everything that on that highway should be exempt for the 30-foot. You might have to make a special code, but, I mean, if you come down to like your store, he's got no room at all. His store is right up on the highway. So if you have a 30-foot limit and something happens to this building, he's out of business. He's done. I have buildings, my car wash, and the other building right next to it are right up on, it's the corner of Preston Road and 17, they're right up on the highway. So if anything happens to that, we're done. You know, we don't, we don't have any place to go. Checkers is right up on the highway. And if you took 30-foot away from them, they'd be out of business. The hotels and motels across the street and on down the road, same thing. Anything happens, they're done. And it's not our fault. It is the highways division's fault. They came along and said, well, we're going to take 10-foot, going to take 20-foot, going to take 30-foot. We wound up saying, okay, you know, you can have it for four bucks. And we should have been asking 84 bucks. So anyway, that's my idea of it, and that is that you need to exempt anybody that's on the highway that lost frontage due to widening of the highway. And that would be your reason and excuse. Thank you.
Good to see you. Name and address for the clerk.
One time Miss Carolina played baseball Friday, never mind.
It's NC State, it's not Carolina.
My name is Manfred Daughtry. I live at 110 Troy Avenue, Jacksonville, North Carolina, 28540. Mr. Mayor, Council, I appreciate your concern for us business and also, Mr. Manager. But my property is right in front of the the people who are trying to, I don't know what they're doing, but there's apartments back there behind me. They need some cleaning up, I'm all for that. But this 30-foot buffer is, you're taking away 30 feet of our property. We can't do anything with it, plus all the other restrictions. I appreciate what you said, sir, about putting our souls on the mercy of a future council, you know, that would might change things, but I think we need to change it now. I think there's bound to be a compromise that we can limit this buffer on Anzlo Drive and 17. And I would like to say one other thing, too, and I know the planning department have worked real hard on this, but in in their report, under eye evaluation, it said, based on the conversations with the county tax assessor. the conversations with the county tax assessor, no evidence has been presented to suggest that rezoning would adversely affect the property values of the surrounding lawn. That is absolutely not true. It most certainly will affect, not the tax value, but the fair market value. So I feel sure y'all guys are friends of mine for, I've been here many years, my father served up there for many years, I feel sure that we can come to some kind of compromise and eliminate that buffer, and thank you all so much.
I live at 311 Royal Bluff Avenue in Jacksonville, been here all my life. Everything they've all said tonight has really hit the point where I want to be at, but I just want to make sure everybody knows, when you use the word, put them between a rock and a hard place, that's really what I was thinking about for my two children who are coming back into the business. They're both coming back, they're going to back here in Jacksonville. I'm worried about that 30-foot buffer, too. I'm worried about down the road with the hurricanes. I know how everybody changes. The group of guys we've got here right now, they're all great, everybody's been working with us, but I'm worried for down the road, leaving my kids in that rock between a hard place. And I think everybody here, I think they don't need to jump the gun and approve something tonight that's going to put all of us in a bad spot. And there's a lot of guys, when I walked down Anzlo Drive last few days, stopped in our stores, they can't even be here at 5 o'clock. They're running small businesses. Actually, the guy at the mechanic shop that Mandy rents to, he was busy. I went to see another guy, they're all busy. They said, Greg, we can't even be here at 5. I made some plans, my daughter stayed there at my shop, Jack has problems with his shop right now, you know, business is hard for these guys to get out. Even after the post-pandemic, we don't have enough employees to be here. But I wanted to come out today, I wanted to make sure that I take care of not just Greg Popkin, but everybody on 17, Anzlo Drive, Henderson Drive. And I'm not against the guys getting their property redone, the residential, to make it where they can borrow money and do what they need to do, but I want y'all to think about this, let's not do anything that's going to jeopardize all the business people, all the small business people. And that's the last people you've got left here. We see what happened to Court Street, we see what happens to, but Anzlo Drive, Henderson Drive, and 17, the small bit of us is just the last guys left here. So think about it before you make that decision. It's a big decision. I know you're doing 80 pieces of property, I think, is that the number, 80 pieces?
About 74.
74. Maybe you can only do, maybe you need to do, maybe you need to do something small for the guys that need it right tonight, but let's make sure that we take care of the small business guy that can't even be here tonight. Thank you.
And your daughter was going to say what?
I'll take it.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
We'll wrap it with the hearing now?
Yes, sir, I think if you're ready to go ahead and take care of the...
A motion is, we're going to have a motion that's proper, okay. So now we'll close the public hearing on this matter and open it up for further discussion.
Be comfortable with tonight would be to rezone and the specific address, 213 Preston?
213 Preston, I actually re-circled it is.
One of those parcels?
Yeah, it's behind the O.
Okay.
Is that the address there?
Yes, 213.
You know, you mentioned that we could reduce, and I think, I think just to, just not to put ourselves in a bind, but go ahead and help these individuals who need immediate attention, let's go ahead and rezone that tonight. And then ask staff to come back per our attorney's advice, to come back with some proposals by the September 22nd, hopefully some, worked out some issues, whether they come back with a special district or put in some exemptions, however they deem fit to come back, I think is probably the best thing we need to do tonight.
Jeremy, is that the only property that's urgent?
This one and the two parcels here, and I would actually expand that to the apartment complex because they're currently doing renovations, just now getting them from Florence. It's not causing many problems, but in order to keep the Beecham tract from being a spot zoning in the meantime, it would be more consistent if we went ahead and grabbed the entire apartment complex, rezoned it to residential multifamily, high density. The 213, there is residential multifamily low density in the area, I don't think spot zoning would be a great issue there. That's just my professional opinion.
The only problem, if we do, if we do that area you're suggesting off of Beecham Lane and that apartment complex, it does back up to several
It does.
...commercial properties on Henderson, that would have issues if we should happen to have, you know, something hit us before then.
Yeah, that was to answer your question, what other immediate issues, that's another immediate issue. That was actually before, we were working with the two owners about petitioning, they just, they didn't submit it as quick as the other person did. So those are the three immediate properties that we're facing with, that they're having issues. You're correct about what you stated, but those are the three that are pressing for them, that have contacted staff.
Mr. Warden, would you, and this is a question, would you not feel comfortable in rezoning all of these properties as proposed with a direction specifically to staff that you to be back by September the 12th with a way to take care of these businesses that back up to them?
Normally I would, but it is a large amount, and I go back to Mr. Thomas's comment, it's such a large number of parcels, it would have been nice to have been able to study it a little bit more. And so I think I would be comfortable then in saying, let's just take care of the ones that have an immediate issue on the property side.
Yes.
So would you, would you like a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I got one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I, well, I was, what, Mr. Terrell?
Terrell.
Because he mentioned, you know, I was concerned about future growth, you know, if we have any enlarging of any highways, I just want his to be considered, what his comment was, you know, going forward.
Good point, there's a, I would be, you know, it wouldn't hurt to look along all of those commercial properties along 17 there, especially on that, what I'm going to call the left side of our map, probably the north side, whatever that is. And just make sure, you know, we, we're looking at where they back up to residential, but there may be other properties there that if they were to be destroyed by whatever, would have trouble even building back on the same footprint, regardless of what was behind them. So.
And Anzlo Drive included in that?
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, I'm hoping they're looking at that whole, that whole issue. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we rezone 213 Preston and, how do you want me to, the Beecham, Beecham Lane and the apartment complex, what is the name of that?
Richland's Avenue.
Richland's Avenue, Richland's Apartments.
Richland's Apartments. Is that specific enough?
Brookfield Apartments.
Brookfield Apartments? Okay. Is that, is that clear, Ms. Carmen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's a motion, Mr. Mayor.
You need affirmation of findings of fact as part of that motion?
Yes, we would.
And that's any recommendation would fit that.
Yes.
And that, et cetera. We'll complete all that.
A through I?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Whatever those, those are, alphabet letters are, yes.
Second.
The question includes a specific instructions, so have them come back before.
Yes, needs to be detailed, yes. Come back with recommendations and help us get out of this, help us get out of between the rock and the hard place. You Carolina guys are pretty, pretty sharp on that kind of stuff, so.
We have a second. Further discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify of a send, huh? All opposed?
Mr. Mayor, could I just clarify that when we come back with some text to deal with the issues that y'all, that we could bring back also the other rezonings for you to consider at that same, same meeting and hopefully do them both?
Probably have no issues to the bottom side of 17, but, you know, we don't think, not anticipating any, but we certainly got several on the, on the, on the left side or the west side, whatever that is, west, north.
Yes. And two other points, we will bring this back to you in workshops, we did not have that opportunity, did not take that opportunity this time, bring it back in workshops, will also involve the public who is here and those who've contacted us or will contact us so that they have an opportunity to review any proposals prior to the public hearing.
We'll move on to agenda item number 14, it's a public hearing on Unified Development Ordinance and City Code of Ordinance, text amendments dealing with UDO and Chapter 5 of the Code, and this is going to be presented by Ryan King.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a multi-department, multiple code amendment. This is for both Unified Development Ordinance and the City Code. These changes are required by the General Assembly. The session law in 2019-111 was signed into law back in July of 2019. June 19, 2020, Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes became effective, and all cities, towns, municipalities have until August 1 of this year to make these changes to our individual codes throughout the state of North Carolina. I'm going to go over kind of what the required changes are that you can see before you in attachments A and B. B is the City Code, attachment A is the Unified Development Ordinance changes. So anywhere in these codes that references 160A is going to change to 160D. In some cases, 168-100 doesn't become 160D-100, it may go to a different, a different numbering altogether. Another change that was made was development agreements cannot be a quasi-judicial type hearing, it's got to be a legislative decision. So we've proposed those changes to the Unified Development Ordinance. Once again, all of this is to remain in compliance with the North Carolina General Statutes. Conditions of approval, moving forward, we'll need those in writing to ensure that we can enforce those conditions. One thing that's not part of the 160D changes is eliminate the protest petitions with rezonings, they've actually done away with that, it was, you know, it was kind of still in the Unified Development Ordinance, we're going to go ahead and strike that out. So that's one item that's not part of the 160D changes. We are adding statutory language to, for site plan appeals within the Unified Development Ordinance, adding some clarity to one of the exempt subdivision standards in the subdivision aspects of the UDO. One change that the General Assembly has stated that cities must allow without regulations is bona fide farms within the ETJ. So we're adding that as a land use to Article 4.1 Use Table, and there are no standards. We cannot regulate bona fide farms. So if it meets the statutory definition of a bona fide farm in the ETJ, there's no city regulations allowed. Same thing with the county. Although they have the entire county, it's only applicable in our ETJ. Mobile home standards, we cannot regulate mobile homes based on age, so we're going to clean up the part that references the 1976 HUD statement, I believe it is. So we're going to eliminate that and become more in line with the building code requirements for mobile homes anyhow. We're going to adjust the performance guarantee section for these amendments. Some enforcement standards, there's actually quite a few changes to Article 8, which is our enforcement part of the Unified Development Ordinance. And it also requires that our definitions not conflict with things such as dwelling, manufactured homes, and some other specific definitions of the different codes in the state level. And then one other item that is not part of the 160D changes is there's a few carryovers from different department names, we want to clear up the department names that reflect current organizational structures. With that being said, like I stated, this is going to be revisions to the Unified Development Ordinance that are required, and also to the City Code. So the UDO changes are in attachment A, and the City Code changes are in attachment B. Do you have any answer any questions that you may have?
I have a couple of comments. The state legislature recognized that counties and cities throughout the state use different terms and have different standards. What this does is to, at least some degree, but not a total degree, it sets up one set of rules that every city and every county has to adopt. You may have noticed, I know many of you have the opportunity to watch the county commission meetings. I won't ask why you watch those meetings, I'll just simply say, I know you have the opportunity. When the county went through the 160D changes, they also went through rezoning a lot of property. We're not doing that. So I don't want you tonight to look at this and say, well, I remember when they were having the county, they had all these people come out and protest. They were doing a lot that we are not doing tonight. What we're doing tonight is simply changing the text of the Unified Development Ordinance, your zoning code, so that it meets the exact criteria established by the state legislature. None of that criteria has to do with setbacks, none of that criteria has to do with landscaping, none of that criteria has to do with what can go into a particular use or a particular district. It has to do with process, definitions, and the things that Ryan has just said. So I know that you have not had a workshop on this, I can tell you, John and I have followed this very, very closely. As your manager, I'm very comfortable, you're not going to have, quick knock on wood, you're not going to have any issues come out of this by changing your code to be in compliance with the state law. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you. Mayor and Council, to give you a further level of comfort, well, let me first preface that by saying, Ryan and Jeremy have done an outstanding job in making these changes. There are many cities that have spent several thousand dollars, the school of government charged you $2,000 just to go over the code and make sure it all looks right. There's just a lot of cities that spend a lot of money in doing this, but Ryan and Jeremy have picked up the workload here and done it. Bottom line is, if we had, if they've missed something or we've missed something, and someone points it out to us, the state statute trumps the city code, so the state statute is going to control. So, you know, if y'all said, we don't want to even deal with this tonight, come July 1, which is just a few days away, the state statute is going to take over and it's going to govern this whole thing, that Ryan and Jeremy have tried to, again, catch everything in the present UDO, et cetera, and make it applicable. But again, we believe that, have your public hearing and then approve this to bring us in compliance with the state statute.
Couple of things to add, I appreciate that. This was a multi-department scenario as well, so, you know, I'd be remiss, I mean, Jason Larson, Danny Bryan, and Brian Kelly with the Fire Department, they've looked at the City Code aspect, as I'm sure other staff has as well. It's taken 153, which is the county statute, and 160A, which is the city's, and it's putting together in one chapter. So you don't have to look at that if you're county, that if you're city, it's all going to be underneath 1, 160D. That's kind of the main premise behind blending everything together, as Dr. Wood have stated. And one other thing that I think made it a little bit easier for the city of Jacksonville to kind of do this on our own, is that in, the UDO is only seven years old. So when we paid a consultant to draft our Unified Development Ordinance back, that was adopted in 2014, they had the understanding that some of these changes were going to be forthcoming, and they eliminated a lot of the things that other people are having to take out of the ordinance today. So that made it, you know, helpful for us as well, unlike other people where they're adopting Unified Development Ordances or making major overhauls, changing the zoning, we had kind of already done some of those items previously. That's what allowed this to be a smoother process for the city of Jacksonville and save some time and money as well.
What is a site plan appeal?
If we were to deny a site plan, there's an appeal process that our customers can go through, whether it be our citizens, they can go, if it's to the Board of Adjustment, in some cases it's to, after the Board of Adjustment, it would be the Spirit Court. Some cases it may be that with the administrative approval that staff does with subdivisions now, the appeal could be city council and then to the Spirit Court. So it gives people an opportunity... an opportunity if they have a denial to go through due process.
But let's talk about what it doesn't do, wanna make sure, cause I think that's part of what your concern is. If I'm a neighbor and John is doing something and I don't like his site plan, but the city approves it, do I as a neighbor have the right to appeal that?
If it meets code, it meets code.
Yeah. I mean, and, and that's important for you to understand. It puts in, because site plans are normally an administrative function, this gives them an appeal if they don't agree with what the staff does.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ryan?
Good work. Well done.
So we're gonna retest the regular council meeting, open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone present wishes to speak on this issue. Seeing no takers, a closed public hearing reconvened the council meeting, going to item number fifteen, this is an appointment.
Need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion, don't we? Uh, yeah. Sorry about that, getting ahead of myself. All right, motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the U D O text amendment found in attachment A, and the council approved the city code amendment found in attachment B. The amendments advance the public interest by providing the updates to the city code and the U D O as required by the state law.
We have a second, any further discussion? Here, not all in favor signify with a say aye. All opposed. Now we go to agenda item number fifteen, this is an appointment to the Anwassa authority. And let me get to it. We got two positions reserved on the Anwassa Board of Directors for members of the Jacksonville City Council. The Anwassa bylaws provide for three-year staggered terms, and any member may be reappointed by their representative government to subsequent terms. Right now, Councilman Bob Warden is serving an existing three-year term expiring July thirty first twenty twenty-one. Councilman Jerry Bitner is serving an existing three-year term expiring July thirty first twenty twenty-two. So I guess the question is, can we have a motion to reappoint or appoint?
You can do it, Randy. You can knock it out, cause I got the other one. Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Councilmember Warden and Councilman Mayor Pro Tim Bitner to the Anwassa board.
Could that be in reference to, to twenty twenty-four for Mr. Warden and twenty twenty-two for Mr.?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Phillips, I'll move that the motion be closed and the candidates be accepted by acclamation.
We have a second.
Second.
Right, any discussion? All in favor signify with a say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Brings us to agenda item number sixteen, and this is the Juneteenth holiday. And at the request of Councilmember Dr. Washington, the mayor has authorized having this put on the agenda. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to you now, Dr. Washington, and let you present this item.
Good, good evening to the mayor and council and to the citizens of Jacksonville. We are here tonight to discuss about the Juneteenth holiday. Before we have this, this discussion, I really think that for this last past year, our country has been in turmoil with regards to social injustices, racial tension. And so part of the process to healing is that we have to find a way to be able to place healing within our community and within our nation, to close this gaping wound so that our children of tomorrow do not have to continue to relive the injustices of our ancestors and what we are currently living today. So based upon that, the city of Jacksonville and Freedom Day observance, we know that the Freedom Day holiday was based upon the Thirteenth Amendment, that basically abolished slavery. The United States Congress back in April of, April eighth of eighteen sixty-five passed the Thirteenth Amendment, and the United States House passed the amendment as well on January the thirty-fourth, January the thirty-first eighteen sixty-five. At that time, in our country, we had thirty-six states, and in order for an amendment to be ratified, three-fourths or twenty-seven out of the thirty-six states needed to ratify the amendment for the Constitution. The first state was, of course, Illinois on February the first eighteen sixty-five, and then two months later, President Abraham Lincoln was assassinated. North Carolina was number twenty-six in adopting the Thirteenth Amendment on December fourth eighteen sixty-five, and then Georgia was the twenty-seventh state that adopted the Thirteenth Amendment on December eighth eighteen sixty-five. Therefore, at that time, Secretary of State William H. Seaworth proclaimed the adoption of the Thirteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution, and those two particular dates that's highlighted in red was of significance importance, the reason why Freedom Day was chosen to be celebrated in the city of Jacksonville the second month in December, because it was in between the two dates of the state of North Carolina ratifying the Thirteenth Amendment, and then the Secretary of State ratifying the amendment to the United States Constitution. This gentleman, Mr. Robert, excuse me, Mr. Richard Robert Wright, was a founder of Free, Freedom Day. He was born into slavery in Georgia in May sixteenth of eighteen fifty-five, and after emancipation, both he and his mother relocated to another city in Georgia. Afterwards, at the age of twenty-one years of age, he graduated valedictorian from a college called Source School, which is later renamed Atlanta University, and then, as we know it today, Clark Atlanta University. And both of those, and that particular school is considered to be one of historically black collegiate universities, as we affectionately call the H B C U's. In eighteen ninety-one, Mr. Wright was appointed as the first president for the Georgia State Industrial College for Colored Youth. This institution was later named Savannah State University, which is another H B C U in Georgia. And incidentally, both of these institutions are currently still functioning as H B C U's in the state of Georgia. In eighteen ninety-eight, President William McKinley appointed Mr. Wright to the rank of Major N S Paymaster in the United States Volunteers in the United States Army. At that time, he was the highest ranking African American, and he was honorably discharged that same year in December of eighteen ninety-five. Afterwards, in nineteen twenty-one, he moved to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and attended the University of Pennsylvania Warden School of Business. He founded the Philadelphia Citizens and Southern Bank and Trust Company, and at that time, it was the only African American-owned bank in the North, which also withstood the Great Depression. Mr. Wright was also credited for commissioning the abolishment of slavery, the seventy-fifth anniversary United States stamp, and this was the second stamp in the African Americans and Their Contributions series that was released on October twentieth nineteen forty. Mr. Richard Wright, a former slave, college graduate, college president, United States Army officer and banker, was emancipated by the Thirteenth Amendment. Mr. Wright went on to establish the National Freedom Day on February the first nineteen forty-one. Quoting Mr. Wright, he indicated that he believed that there should be a day when freedom for all Americans is celebrated. I invite national and local leaders to meet in Philadelphia to formulate plans to set aside February the first each year to memorialize the signage of the Thirteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution by President Abraham Lincoln on February the first eighteen sixty-five, which freed all slaves, or which freed all United States slaves. One year prior to Mr. Wright's death, both he and the N double A C P leader, Mr. Walter White, wrote a landmark letter to then-President Truman describing the maltreatment of United States Army Sergeant Isaac Woodard. Sergeant Woodard, a World War Two decorated veteran, hours after being honorably discharged from the United States Army while in uniform, was traveling by bus to reunite with his family in South Carolina, was severely beaten, resulting in both eyes being gouged and blinded for life at the hands of the police. As a result of this atrocious act, President Truman signed an executive order to desegregate all branches of the military. However, full desegregation, desegregation did not occur under the auspices of President Dwight Eisenhower. Richard Wright died on July second nineteen forty-seven, and one year after his death, paying tribute to his legacy, the United States Congress passed legislation observing Freedom Day as February the first in this country. President Truman signed the National Freedom Day observance into law on June thirtieth nineteen forty-eight. And I don't know if everyone can see this clearly, but the lady that is wearing the hat, that's Mary McLeod Bethune. This is the joint resolution by the United States Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America, that the President of the United States is authorized to issue a proclamation designating the first day of February of each year as National Freedom Day for the purpose of commemorating the signage by President Abraham Lincoln on February the first eighteen sixty-five, of the joint resolution adopted by the Senate and the House of Representatives of the United States proposing the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America. And this was approved on eight, excuse me, June thirtieth of eighteen, nineteen forty-eight, excuse me. On June twenty-first of two thousand and sixteen, the Jacksonville City Council passed Freedom Day, the Thirteenth Amendment Resolution. At that time, we were the first municipality in North Carolina and believed to be the first municipality in the United States to honor the signage of the Thirteenth Amendment as a paid holiday. Freedom Day Thirteenth Amendment Holiday is a tribute to Mr. Richard Wright, founder of National Freedom Day commemorating the signage of the Thirteenth Amendment. On November sixteenth of two thousand and sixteen, the National League of Cities City Conference, City Summit Conference, the Human Development Federal Advocacy Committee granted nonpartisan support of the Jacksonville City Council Freedom Day Amendment Observance and created a new proposed resolution. This resolution was Resolution Eighteen in support of a national holiday celebrating the Thirteenth Amendment, in which the National League of Cities called upon the United States Congress to declare a national holiday honoring the adoption and enactment of the Thirteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution to be celebrated on the second Monday of December, falling between the dates of its ratification and adoption. On November seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, the National League of City Resolution Committee approved the proposed Human Development Resolution Eighteen for final adoption at the National League of Cities Annual Business Meeting. On November seventeenth of that same year, the city of Jacksonville was invited to give a Freedom Day Observance presentation to the National League of City Big Ideas for Small Cities. On November nineteenth, the Human Develop, the Human Development Resolution was adopted at the National League of Cities Annual Business Meeting by the voting delegates. On December the twelfth of two thousand and sixteen, the city of Jacksonville celebrated the first Freedom Day and paid homage to the black slaves and their descendants, modern-day slavery of human trafficking, and false imprisonment regarding with mass incarceration. The National League of Cities Cultural Diversity Awards associated with Freedom Days for cities with a population between fifty thousand and one to two thousand, the city of Jacksonville, on March the, excuse me, March two thousand of eighteen, we won second place with the one city, our city, my city, and on March two thousand nineteen, we won first place with the True Justice Human Trafficking Awards. Since two thousand and sixteen, the Human Development Federal Advocacy Committee has annually renewed Resolution Eighteen, and since joining the National League of Cities, it is the first time the city of Jacksonville has created a local resolution that was adopted by the National League of Cities in support of becoming a national holiday. On the historical moment, on June fifteenth of two thousand twenty-one, the United States Senate passed Juneteenth legislation. Following that day, the House passed Juneteenth legislation, and finally, President Biden signed legislation honoring Juneteenth as a federal holiday. And the first time that Juneteenth was celebrated as a federal holiday was this past Friday on June the eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. When this council decided to pass Freedom Day, we had many tenants and many reasons as to why. However, with that being said, our great history and our great work is now going to continue to move forward. And although we may not have scored the winning touchdown, we can stand on the stage with the rest of the nation and to celebrate our accomplishments and move this city forward in honoring and celebrating Juneteenth. So Mayor Phillips and Council, I make a motion that the city of Jacksonville replace Freedom Day, the Thirteenth Amendment, with Juneteenth Day, Freedom Day, as the city official record, and that observances for Freedom Day in the month of December will no longer occur.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, there is.
Mr. Jackson.
I'm glad that you're working towards making this a holiday, but we had an opportunity to be first in the line of our representation from the federal level down to the, to the municipalities. And a lot of times, we make decisions because of lack of information. I understand that. The National Black Caucus of local elected officials has stood behind making Juneteenth a national holiday. And as an at-large member, I presented this before our council, that was, this idea that was originally presented to Dr. Woodruff through a former councilman, Jerome Willingham, and I agree with it. In the future, I think a lot of, lot of things is happening in terms of not understanding each other. I think that's where, you know, we, we end up having our disagreements by lack of education. And hopefully, we could start doing other things in the future, the racial equity and leadership committee offers training for our different cities, and they'll come in and facilitate workshops so we can better understand each other, be it race, gender, social standing, you know? And hopefully going forward, I, you know, we always, Dr. Woodruff talk about civility and respect often. And we gotta learn to look at each other as equals, regardless if they picking up gum off the floor from time to time. I don't mind getting a, cleaning a toilet if I have to, any way I can serve. So we gotta look at each other and respect each other in everything we do. And hopefully, you know, us as council persons and the citizens that we represent, that we could come to each other, and if we have disagreements, we, we can communicate with each other and get through those, like we do here. Sometimes we agree to disagree, but we have to look at each other and respect each other and be able to talk to each other, and not look down on anyone as we go forward. So that's just something I need to say. As a servant of the people, and son of Jacksonville, and I traced slavery through Onslow County and Jones County and Craven County. So I hope we can move forward, and instead of going black and white, let's go right and, right and wrong, you know? But thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
I think, also, I don't think you mentioned that the county also enacted Juneteenth.
I think, also, I don't think you mentioned that the county also enacted Juneteenth at one of the county commissary meetings. And this was kind of aligned, you know, the holiday, and I think that, I think it was a, it's a good, it's a good thing to do. And, you know, we started it with the Freedom Day. I mean, we, we can claim that, you know, that we, we started with that initiative. But, you know, Congress and the President have passed a law that has made this a national holiday, and I, I think it's, I think it's a great thing, and we should join in.
Now, one additional thing, Mayor, it's like, some of the names of, of Juneteenth is, is Juneteenth Independence Day, they call it Freedom Day, and Emancipation Day.
Yeah, I think the, I want to say that the legislation headline said, actually said Juneteenth Freedom Day, so.
That's what's on the, yeah.
So, yeah. Anyway, thank you for your input, and I guess we have a motion and a second. Let's, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Washington, for your research. We'll start with our reports. I, I don't have a report, but I'll start with Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, I do have a report from Mr. Michael Smith. He stays in Sherwood Ford, and he, Ford, and he really appreciate what's been going concerning the paving. He said he's, he's happy to be driving on some, you know, some new paved roads, so he wanted me to mention that. And I wanted to also mention that at Juneteenth ceremony over in Georgetown, Ms. Cynthia Watson was recognized for keeping the idea of Juneteenth alive in the area, and so I wanted to recognize that, so, also. But that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bicker?
No report.
Mr. Washington?
No report, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I always get lost.
I thought that was Ron. Mr. Sosa?
Well, Ron, I thought we talked about planning the board of regular discuss that tonight, or is that fine with, is that good? Okay, I thought we had to bring it up tonight. Okay, I'm good then.
Actually, it was voted on the consent agenda.
Okay, no, sorry, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Ward?
Yes, the city has offered the economic, economic development folks, it's currently a staff of two, Mark Sutherland and Teresa are their two, two folks, and we've offered them the train depot for a dollar, dollar a year, and they pay the utilities. The city will, of course, maintain the building as a city, as a city-owned building with the insurances and so forth and so on, with, with, with the thought that it's best for a building to be occupied rather than unoccupied. And that it kind of helps us a little bit in that we at least have somebody sitting in a building to make sure that it's taken care of, and of course, we obviously are helping the economic development folks by giving them a home. As you may, may be aware, they've, they had some funding shortfalls in the last, last couple of years, and they actually moved out of the Commerce Center just because the rent was so daggone, I mean, excuse me, because they could not afford to pay the rent. So, so we've, we've done that, of course, with, with your blessing, but I just wanted you to let, let y'all know, if you had an issue with that, let it, let the manager know that that's what we've, we've offered them. And I think they're going to take a tour this week to make sure that it, that it meets their, their requirements as well. So, so thank you. That's all I had, sir.
One clarification. The manager, whoever he is, made the offer with the understanding that council must concur in it and that the city attorney will be directed to draw up a lease to, therefore, they'll be leasing the building under certain conditions. So that's the matter. Do you concur in that, or would you prefer for us to take a different direction?
I think it's worth a $2.
$2.
$2.
Dr. Woodruff, your report. Do you have anything?
Seeing no objections, the city attorney then is directed to draw up a lease. Is that what my understanding is?
Yes.
Yes.
$1.
$1.
Turn to your report.
Yes. One item has come to our attention. Again, you know, Ryan and Jeremy, just as you've seen tonight, they, they try to solve problems that will help the, the local economy. We have temporary use standards on the number of days each year that you can have special events. So for example, if you're a commercial establishment, currently, you know, you're limited to only so many days that you can hold a special event. Due to the duration of the pandemic, our businesses are still struggling, and many of them would like to have more special events than the current code allows. So I'm asking you tonight to give me permission to direct the staff that we are suspending the Unified Development Ordinance, Article 4.4, Temporary Use Standards, as it relates to the number of days they can have special events between now and December 31st. Right now, you can only have it 14 days. We have several businesses that would like to have it many more days than that. Now, they're still going to have to meet all other standards as far as getting permits, meeting the fire code, and so forth. What I'm asking tonight is that you authorize the manager to suspend any enforcement of Unified Development Ordinance, Article 4.4, Temporary Use Standards, as it contains to the number of days special events can occur. That would be a suspension through December 31st, 2021. All other standards will remain and must be met. Do you have any objections to us doing that?
Some others.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
No other items, sir.
Yes, sir, I have a report. The legislature has acted in reference to redistricting and the elections for this year, and I'm going to go over that with you here. Basically, they have done a statewide bill. No local bill can preempt this statewide bill, so we're bound by it, as well as everyone else in the state who is faced with the redistricting because of wards, et cetera. The bill, or the, was passed on June the 15th by the Senate and the House, it was the final vote, so it's a ratified bill. It's been sent to the governor, and he has 10 days. He can either veto it, he can sign it, or he can do nothing, and in 10 days, it becomes the law of the state. I'm going to come back to that in just a moment, because there's kind of a reason maybe it's just sitting there right now, but he hadn't done anything as of 4 o'clock today. The law provides the following. The law provides that the city, after you get the data, and remember, we talked about honor before September 30, getting the census block data, that after you get the data, the city has to go ahead and have one public hearing, that's what it does require. Now, we're going to talk about public comment and things of that, or input, but you have to have one public hearing, but no later than November the 12th, 2021, you're supposed to submit it to the Board of Elections, excuse me, you're supposed to have it, the ward's drawn by November the 12th, and submit to the Board of Elections by November the 17th. If for some reason you cannot meet that deadline, there is a 30-day grace period which gives you then until December the 17th, but that's it. You've got to have it submitted to the board by that time. If you're able to meet the first deadline, that is the November the 17th deadline, then the filing period will be open at 12 noon on December the 6th and close at 12 noon on December the 17th. So according to my math, that's about 11 days or so. If you're not able to meet that deadline and meet the second deadline of December the 17th, the filing period is from 12 noon on January the 3rd to 12 noon on January the 7th, which again, is like four days. So it's a much shorter period if you don't, for a filing period there. The election, whichever one of those that falls out as far as the filing period, will occur on March the 8th, 2022. Now, the law does provide for our two at-large members to go ahead and be, their seats to be offered for election in this year, because again, redistricting has nothing to do with them. If you take no action, their terms are carried over to that March 8th date, which is what I would recommend, that you take no action for several things. Number one, the additional cost of another election. Number two, when folks go to vote on March the 8th, there would be no one, a reason for them to vote and for, vote in Ward 4, because there's no one to be running there except the at-large folks. Number three, there's historically a low turnout, and so with two municipal elections, there'd probably even be a lower turnout. And again, the cost. We don't, we checked with Jason Dedman, the Board of Elections Chairman, Executive Today, and the primary for the county has not been set yet, but if that is going to be on March the 8th, then in the past, we have gotten some considerations far as the cost of the election. So again, looking at that, so there. I want you to know additionally that your staff has been working every two weeks with our GIS person, and we believe that even though it's going to be a compressed timeline, we'll be able to meet hopefully that first, the first deadline. The, we have, will have for your consideration, number one, don't forget, you're supposed to let the clerk know by August the 3rd who your nominee is for that committee, that is the redistricting committee, and you will vote on it as a body on the August 17th meeting. So we'll have all those names in front of you then. But we'll also have at that time a draft for you to consider as far as the redistricting committee's responsibilities and so forth. We've already been working on that, and we've, again, we'll be starting after the July 4th week, every week, working together with our GIS specialists. We're looking at different data and information so that hopefully, again, when we get the, y'all give us a committee, that is on August the 17th, that we'll be able to have our information in hand and be able to, to hit the round, the ground running, another term from law school at UNC, but that we'll be able and ready to move forward. But again, we're, we're optimistic that we can meet that deadline. We are already looking at different scenarios and things to talk to the committee about and, and actually setting forth agendas for the first couple of meetings for them. But again, I wanted to give you those deadlines because that is the law, and let me go back to why the, the governor situation. One of the components of this bill that I've not mentioned has nothing to do with us, it has everything to do with the City of Raleigh. The City of Raleigh asked a House member to insert in the bill that they move to a plurality election and that their elections be permanently moved to even-numbered years, and that's in this bill. So their election will be in 2022, they'll carry over to then, and every two or four years, whatever cycle they're on, they will be having their election. All five senators from Raleigh voted against this bill because they didn't like that. There was no public input or anything of that nature. Again, the governor may sign it, he may do nothing and just let it become law, but there's a lot of concern over that particular provision being put, put in. If you listen or read WRL and the NNO and that kind of stuff, there've been some, some comments and controversies there on how that got into the bill, but that's in this bill, but that certainly has nothing to do with us. And I believe one way or the other, what I've given to you, that this bill will become the law of the land the next week or so by govern, by the governor's action or inaction. Is there any questions that I could answer for anyone based upon at this time?
There's a lady that's had her hand up. We're going to adjourn the meeting. You can address either Mr. Carter or Mr. Dr. Woodruff.
I'm sorry.
I'd be glad to talk to you since the meeting, so if you want to talk about the bill.
A motion to adjourn.
I wanted to make.
So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.